Well, that said, let's begin. Mr. Dickover, do you have anything? What was your opening statement? What'd you like to tell the people of Eureka?
All right. Hello. My name is Doug Dickover and I'm running for the school board seat, one Charlie. A little about me. I'm a retired United States Marine. I currently work for the Nevada Department of Transportation, and I have three children attending Eureka County schools. I volunteer at multiple school events. I'm part of multiple veteran service and support organizations in our community. I am running for the school board because I believe I would be a beneficial member to the board and the district and bring a new perspective to the board. I have spoken to some parents, teachers, and staff at the Eureka and Crescent Valley schools, so I have an idea what I'm requesting to be a part of. I feel I am qualified for this position because of my life and military experiences, especially my last position before retiring from the Marines. I served as the operations manager for a military communications school. This position required extensive knowledge of facilities, fiscal management, financial planning, curriculum development, hiring and firing of personnel, transportation, and much more. In this position, we had school detachments in multiple states throughout the country, so I understand some of the logistics between Eureka and Crescent Valley. Also, while this was a military school for adults, the majority of the students were fresh out of high school, so I could see the goods and the bads from those of varying quality of school backgrounds. Previously, I've served as an instructor, so I understand some of what our teachers go through. With these experiences, I feel I would be able to, if elected, hit the ground running and become a useful member to the school board. I've attended multiple school board meetings this past year, so I could better understand how meetings are run and what was expected of a board member. I would appreciate your vote. I thank you for your time tonight, and I'd like forward your questions.
The first question the community had for you is, what do you believe makes a good educator?
For me, in the most part, a good educator is somebody who actually wants to be there. They have a drive. They care about what they're doing, not just earning a paycheck, but where they feel that what they're doing has merit, and they like to see the product of teaching somebody and seeing students improve with what they're being taught.
Thank you. What changes would you make to the Eureka County educational system?
I really can't answer that yet until actually, if elected, until I would sit on the board and understand how the process works, because I don't know how that works, where we get our curriculum from or everything else. I never asked. So I honestly don't know how that would work, but I want to look into it and see how we do it. But I personally have never looked into how that works.
Why do you wish to run for a position in our school board? And what do you offer?
Well, I've already named a lot of stuff that I believe I offer to this program. Besides, I have a very good work ethic. I believe I work well with others. I'm able to work with people with different, you know, diverse backgrounds and everything else. I've been pretty successful at it because of the fact that it's, I believe it's the greater good, and not for my, not for my good, but for the greater good. And then why am I running? Because of the fact that I've been wanting to for a while, and I feel this is the right time for me, and then a good time for the board. So I think this is a good time for something new.
What infrastructure changes do you plan to make during your term?
Well, I can't make any changes. I'm only a member of the board. But I would look into it, you know, what would be beneficial for the school, because I know they're always talking, you know, growth and everything else. It would also, it would depend on what we foresee as growth for the school. Are the mines going to keep producing more? You know, we get more people here. Is Ruby Hill going to be a bigger project? We get a lot more miners, families, everything else here, so that could increase the numbers. I would look at, I would definitely look at facilities to see that, are we utilizing them to their best potential? As there are some improvements we can make. It would help of adding an additional building or two or something like that. Be good for that. Like, I think we should really, I think a good addition would be like a multipurpose building. Look into that for where that could be. We could hold old events, hold assemblies, hold concerts, or anything like that, where it'd be, it could free up space if we needed to in the school to allow for growth of the school without having to do a major structural change or massive growth of the school itself.
What are some areas of study that you believe receive too much focus? And what are some areas of study that you believe should require more focus?
There's pretty good, from what I see, of what at least talking to a lot of kids and my own kids, I feel a lot of the topics that, you know, the subjects that are covered are well done. They get a vast amount of it. I would, I, me personally, I want to, I would look, I want to look into how we get some of those choices of what the curriculum itself actually is, where that choice is made. Does the teacher choose, or is it pushed down towards us? What's missing? I'd love to, I wish we had the ability for more languages for kids to pick. I mean, they have the ability to do it online, but sometimes it's nice to actually have it in-person focus, because the fact that you can actually talk to them can converse with them better instead of just doing a recording online and submitting it and hoping to get a response. So that would be something that'd be nice to do, I think, for the kids.
What are some languages you'd like added?
Um, well, Spanish. That's the main one, because you see that a lot more. But then just kind of put it out there to be nice to put to the students or the parents, everything else. See, is there something that they feel would be a beneficial one that we'd like to see? Maybe Basque, you know, for a joke, but, you know, like, that's could be one. Just something of variety where people would be, and the kids would want to learn it, and they'd actually be excited to learn it, not just, you know, okay, you got to take this, you have this many classes. And whatever it is, you know, doesn't matter. You have a choice. Pick those. So I think it'd be nice to give them more choices.
Do you support the unionization of teachers? And why, why not?
I can't really speak to that, because I don't know a lot about that. I already thought they were part of a union, but I don't know. So I, well, I'd have to look more into that before I gave an opinion on that one, honestly, because I don't know what the beneficial, what benefits would be for them or against.
What policy changes would you like to make during your term?
Again, hard to say, till I actually see what they all are. I don't know what all the policies of the school are, because I always see some with, in regards to different issues that may or may not come up, and then how it's handled. I don't know what their procedures or policies are and how the word gets out to the community, the school members, the teachers, everybody else. So I don't have a good grasp on that one, because I've never actually looked fully more into it, because I thought, you know, once I become part of it, then I can see all that is available to us. And I'm not a teacher, so I don't, I would, I never looked before.
And then faces a national trend in schools towards moral degeneracy. Would you make any changes to combat that? And if so, what?
No, I would not make changes. I would keep them as they are to ensure that they're not forced onto our schools. So I would try to keep at the, I don't want to say the status quo, but keep it so that's not being forced upon us and that we keep it pretty much as we are. And then if kids can be as they are, but we don't have, shouldn't, it should not be forced or required upon all the students for this. That's a student's choice or a parent, whatever they want to do, but that's not on the school to dictate or anybody above us to dictate what people should feel, do, or forced to, forced to accept.
What do you believe makes a good student?
It's on that student. It's if that student's going to want to be there. Not everybody wants to go to school, I understand that. But it is, the parents are a big part of that, to make sure that their, their students, their, their children of the parents understand why they're there, what they're learning, what they're getting out of it, to make sure that they actually want to be there and can put something, you know, and are getting something out of it, and not just forced to go there.
So what staffing changes would you consider making, and if any?
I would have to look at it. That's not something I can readily say, because I haven't seen it. So I see what's good or bad. Anything can always be changed, but, you know, just, I don't know.
Can you explain to the public how the administration of our school district works?
Well, we have the school board, which is, consists of five members. It also includes our superintendent, and then it's got our financial officer, and then there are other members, and the principals themselves of the schools are involved in that. And then it, they conduct, things are put towards them, and then each of the board members reviews it. And then if there's any questions, the superintendent usually is the one to explain what the, what that item is, or the, if it's a financial issue or budget issue or anything else, the financial officer will go and explain what that situation is or what, why they did what they did. And then they'll either read it, vote on it, change it, whichever else, as I understand it, for the board members, the board meetings I've attended. But I have not seen what they receive, so I don't know exactly specifically how that process works for the school board.
What do you see as a major strong point of our school district?
Pride. The pride of our, of where we are, of who we are. That's one of the things I've always loved about this town from the moment I got into it, was the fact that, yeah, I want to call, you know, the generations of families that are here, that have been here for so many generations, how they had a hard start and have made it better for their kids each time. They've all been a part of these schools. You know, even though the buildings may change, the pride's still there. The vandal pride, or, you know, Mighty Mites, whichever else, Crescent Valley, that they are, they want to be here. They're preaching about, they take care of the school, they take, they, they dress properly. You see it, you know, you see a lot of, when you walk through the halls, majority of the kids are happy and like to be there, so you feel it. And then you see the community and the games, how the turnout of the, it wouldn't be a good program or a good school system if the parents weren't that much involved and actually cared to be there, because, you know, the stands are used, if any event, is almost always full. So that's, that's a lot of pride that I, I take and I've always enjoyed from being here.
What are some areas that you believe require attention in our school district?
I have thoughts, but I don't know, I don't like to make assumptions, except my head. So honestly, I've, things I would look at once I, if I'm elected into that position, I would, things I would like to look at, see if I'm incorrect in my thoughts on it, but I don't want to voice it, because the fact, honestly, I may be completely wrong, because I'm not sitting there. I don't understand how that, how the whole process works. But if it was something that I felt was improper, I would, or could maybe use a change, I'd put it to the board and see what they thought about it.
If Eureka's student population continues to grow at its current rate, do you believe that the school board should consider building a separate junior high school building?
That's a huge step. I thought a lot about that, and I do not, in its current capacity, think we are, we're anywhere close to that unless, unless we foresee, like I said, new mines opening up in conjunction with what we already have, where we would see a large influx of people coming here, because we don't have the housing, we don't have the RV spaces, we don't have anything that would allow that many more people to come in here where it would warrant a new facility. I think there's better, there could be, there could be better utilization utilization of facilities now that we have that could help with that growth. And like I said, maybe a multipurpose building at some point could help quickly offset some of those space issues if we need to. But I don't foresee a new, a new school, junior high, being something in the near future.
It's known that Crescent Valley High School students are forced to either attend Battle Mountain High School or seek out online schooling. What are your opinions on this current situation?
I've, I've asked about that, because when I'm there last month, to speak to some of the Crescent Valley staff at the National Night Out, because it was a good opportunity. The, a lot of the kids are for that. Mind you, there is not the, the number of students to warrant a new school, like a, to a school itself. They would not have the ability for sports, for activities, for anything else. And they'd be pretty much in a classroom all day long on a computer and really wouldn't have teacher, not necessarily teacher interaction in person or be able to do a lot of things. They just have the same kids every single time in there, and I don't think that's really beneficial for the kids. And from what I've been told, I have not spoken to any of these kids, that they prefer it more in this capacity. Is it the best, best system? Probably not. But it is the best what we have right now and best for these kids in this, in its current situation, in my opinion.
Do you believe that the school board should play a more active role in our student body? And if so, how?
The student body has to want to be involved as well, because of the, every meeting I've been to, there's never been, except for when they're asking for something, there's never been student body attendance or the, or asking for, you know, wanting to know what, seems to be, not wanting to know what's going on. I do not know this. I'm like, I only makes it what my opinion or what I've seen. So they probably do. I don't know what's discussed at school every day. I don't know if the school board meeting notes or anything coming up is voiced to the students. I'm not a teacher, I don't know that, or the staff. But I, I would say they, if the students would want to be more involved, I think it'd be good that if the school board was more involved. I mean, you see the, the school board at every graduation and event, so you know they're there, people know who they are, but I'm not sure they all know exactly what they do. I would like, I'd like that to be more involved than that, where we have more of a face. It seems to be like, be able to talk to, as, if I was elected to the school board, be a more active participant in, you know, talking to the teachers, talking to the staff, talking to students, so they know who we are and understand what, you know, so we're, we're understanding what they want, what they need, and then, or explain why a decision was made, so they don't, they have a better understanding too. Because, you know, if everybody's got a part in it and understands why, we all get along better, I think.
What are your beliefs on the current student disciplinary practices and policies? And how can they be improved?
Without reading them fully, I honestly don't know the, I said a lot, because I don't know. What the, for each situation or type of situation is. We hear about it after the fact. Sometimes it's right away or not, depending on the level of the severity of the discipline issue. But I definitely, I would want to look more into this to understand. So just me, so I have a better understanding of what's going on. I don't know, I would think some of the parents would want to know how things work. I would like to see if it's possible that a, if it's warranted, a, a, the school board, the school, the district policy is pushed, you know, available to the parents on the website. Maybe it is. I guess, I never found it. So they can understand if a certain thing happens, what is the, this is the process that's going to happen. This is the steps that are going to be. This is where your kids are. I know we had, my gosh, I can't remember what the event was, last year when we, or two years ago, at the elementary school, we had to get all the kids off the, off the, they were all pushed to field, they were notified, so we could all go get them. And it was well organized, and we were informed pretty frequently with, you know, where our kids were, stuff like that. But I don't know, there could always be improvement, but without seeing the process, I honestly, I can't say for sure what an improvement could be until I know more about it.
How do you plan to take action for the students who do not have an adequate food source at home?
That's a, you know, I have to see what was done before, because I thought we had a pretty good, from my understanding, it's a pretty good system that is available to them. But that's a school board issue, like me personally, I can't do anything. It's a board function, and then we just get more information. I'd have to see who, who we could talk to in the area. Like, I don't know if there is food banks that supply to this area. I know that there's stuff that's brought to the senior center. I don't know if that would be like a same similar organization that could provide food for families and that are lacking. But that'd be definitely something, it should, I'd be interested to see what could be done if they're lacking, because yes, you don't want any, you don't want a kid starving. You don't want a family starving. So I'd love to see if we, if there's something in the community can be done. And I'm sure there's, it's not just a school board issue. I think that's also a community issue, which different organizations could be involved with to help assist with that, who might have more time to put towards it. Because it's, we don't really, should be, we shouldn't necessarily be in the homes as a school board, but we can help point them in the right direction to be able to get assistance for them in their homes.
Do you believe that we should incite a better special needs program to offer more resources for students who need them?
From what I have seen and experienced, because I talk to some of these kids fairly frequently, I believe they are getting what they need and what's provided for them. They have, almost, pretty much every one of them has a person assigned specifically to them, so that anything they do need is taken care of. And they seem to enjoy those people, because they get along very well with them, ask for them, take care of them, they are taking care of very well. So I do not, currently, from an outside looking in, think that there's an issue currently that they could, that more services are needed.
What are your opinions on gender-affirming care for students?
I think that's a parent issue and a family issue that would be brought with between them. I do not believe it belongs in the school, and I sure as heck don't believe it should be held from the families or the parents or anything else. I think it should be, that's a family issue that they should be, if they want to, however they want to do that, that's on them. And I don't think anybody at the school or anything else has to change for that. I don't think anybody should be forced to play, make, you know, play, or, play games with them to, to, you know, help them with whatever else, unless they want to. But that, I don't think anybody should be forced to do anything. And I sure as heck don't think the school board or anybody in the facilities, you know, should be forcing anybody to be a part of this. If a person wants to be something, they can be that something, and that's on them. It's not for everybody else to play along.
Do you agree that in recent years there has been an influx in behavioral problems found in our student body? And if so, how do you plan to combat this issue?
So what I have seen, again, from the outside looking in, the majority of the behavioral issues that we have seem to be from families that move here, not families that are here. So now we have to react to families, new people coming in here wanting to make, I don't know what their reasoning is, that they, they seem to cause issues, or maybe they already had issues and they thought that you could fix their issues. I do not think we should be a dumping ground for anybody, for anything with problems. I think that we should be, you know, I wish there was a more, I don't know the policy currently for enrollment and whether we can, I don't want to say dictate, that's not the right word, but if we, if the school has a say, or school board has a say in the enrollment of a student, especially if that student was kicked out of another school and is being brought here or is a discipline issue, and we were not told about it. I think the school should definitely, the school district should definitely be told if there's somebody, a problem coming in, and so that we can better prepare for it instead of having to act after the fact for something like that.
What are your opinions on the current school board's budget and how it has been used?
I don't know a lot about it. I was, I sat in a meeting where they've talked about their budget a little bit, and I've seen kind of the breakdown of it, but I don't have a full understanding how they spend their money. I know they try to be very careful with it on, to make sure that's not taken away by the state, that it's used specifically for Eureka County. But without being a part of it or seeing the breakdown fully and how that, how it's divested or, or spent, I cannot say at this time.
What are your opinions on the teacher shortage? And what is a reasonable plan of action for our school district?
Well, part of the frustration that I have heard about is that a lot of teachers make a decision at the last minute, which makes it very hard to leave. So it makes it very hard to properly put out the hiring for a new teacher to allow some very quality teachers that might have applied, but it was way too late in the game, and they already had signed a contract with another school. I wish that, you know, they, I think they had, I don't know if they still have the incentive program for teachers to make a decision well before each year, to make sure that they're going to, they might get a bonus or something if they, I think, if they, to be able to stay on, to make sure that they're staying on for that next year, so we don't have that problem. Because I think that we would have a lot better quality pool of applicants to us and be able to fill our needs more if they had more time, these people had more time to put in for it, and we would have more time to actually do proper vetting, proper applications, proper interviews of these candidates, to make sure we're getting who we need, the correct person we need, and we're not having to do constant long-term subs or something else that was more proper. A teacher we know is going to stay here, hopefully bring, should bring their family here and wants to be here, is not just here for the last three years so they get a better retirement check and then leave. So that's not fair to anybody, I don't think.
Well, following that, what are your thoughts on our current teacher salaries?
There's, I, that was, that's, I have no part of that. I don't know how that was decided. I mean, they, it's by the, I believe the income that we receive from mines and everybody else, that was agreed upon salaries. So I don't know if they make more or not. I don't know what the other school districts in the state make, in the other counties, wherever else. So I can't justify or say how that works out, whether we make more than them or not. I think it's a fair incentive program that the school pays for, you know, for if teachers want to better educate themselves by getting their additional degrees and everything else, and that can improve their pay on the back end, you know, as they improve themselves. I think that's a great thing. It's incentive to help teachers stay hungry and be a part of it and want to stay here and do more. So I think that's, currently, I think it's a good system. I don't know if it's, if they're overpaid or not. I have no idea. I can't say, nor do I think they are. I don't know.
As a school board member, now, or future potential member, what are your thoughts on the current after-school activities and clubs?
There seems to be a lot. There, mind you, I came from a bigger school in a bigger area, so I understand that there was a lot more things for kids. But from what I can tell, there's plenty of, there are plenty of after-school activities that seem to be around. We got the Lego one for the younger kids. We've got, you know, there's stuff at the high school. There's FFA. There's, I mean, there seems to be a lot of things for them, and none of the grumblings I've ever heard had said that we're lacking in that. If there's potential and the kids would like to have something else available to them, let's hear what they, what they have, and let's see if there's something we can put into play, and then see if there's teachers that would be willing to, or somebody willing to be a part of that, lead that effort and bring more stuff, or opportunities to the kids after school.
What are your beliefs when it comes to providing sexual health education for our students?
I believe that they should have it available to them if they want it, but I do not think it should be a mandatory class. I don't think they should have to sit in a mandatory thing and watch things that are not appropriate for them. That's on the parents to decide if they want that education for their children, and they should be put to them for that. I do not think it should be a forced-upon class or material or everything else. It should, you know, definitely, if you want it available to them, yes. We are an education system. We should have it available for anything that the kids want. But I don't think it should be a forced issue or forced on the kids.
What are your thoughts on current drug and nicotine prevention and disciplinary efforts for our student body?
I thought that Mr. Roman did a very good job last year of cracking down on that, that it seemed to be a growing trend. I don't know specifically what they were looking for, caught, whatever else. But I, I think that, you know, hopefully, Mr. Glover will do the same, that it seems to be, as long as they're more active on it, that the issues seem to decrease very rapidly now they knew that, now it seems like the students knew that there was somebody actually watching what was going on. You can't, you can't necessarily be involved outside of school, so you don't know what kids are going to do on their time. You just try to make sure that they are safe and away from that stuff while they're in the school. And then if there's a trend where there's, it's being found in the school, we need to find out how it's getting in the school and how can we stop that from happening.
What is your opinion on providing parental, improving parental presence in students' lives?
It's not really our place. We don't force things. If I was part of the school board, I'm not part of the school board. But the parents got to want to be a part of it. I hate, you know, I can't dictate anything. But the parents have to want to help their kids, and their kids want, you know, what definitely, I'm sure, want their parental support as well. I'd love to have it, so we could have more parental involvement, more, like, if there was a way, if it was better promoted on events, let's say, academic Olympics is one, because I, that's something that the parents can attend during the school day and see what their kids do, you know, and then be able to sit with their kids who are not part of it, and maybe watch it, whichever else, or other events that are going on throughout the school year. I would definitely love to see where, I think, if more information was provided to the parents on those information emails that we get all the time, that would be good. And I mean, we could involve better parental involvement. They could better have a better understanding what their kids are going through and doing, and then maybe they would participate more.
How important do you believe it is for open transparency with parents in student-school activities?
Extremely important. I don't think anything should be hidden, you know, within reason, I guess. I can't say for every situation, I don't know. But I feel like, like some of the topics you've already covered, that it should not be kept from the parents. I think that anything that goes on, if there's disciplinary issues, if there's, if there's a threat issue or something where their other students may be involved, or their lives may be in jeopardy in some way by the potential threat of a student that shouldn't, you know, needs better help, I think the parents should be, should be told, the community, you know, not necessarily the community, but at least the parents of those kids involved that are directly involved with that or might interact with them, should be told what's going on. I should, yeah, I think it should be open transparency with pretty much everything.
What are your thoughts with current student cellphone usage policies?
I don't know exactly what the cellphone issue policy is. I would prefer that they not have them, except for, I guess, during breaks and during, you know, lunch, whichever else, because of the fact that I don't want to, you don't want to, one, you want the kids to concentrate. They're there for school. They should be there, hopefully, to learn, if they, you know, if they want to learn. And that it's a distraction, and then it can, you're inviting, you know, potential for cheating or anything else. I just don't, I just don't think cellphone should be, not say allowed, but, maybe have in-the-rooms cellphone cubbies that they could put them in, lock them each time, each, you know, for each class. And then when they're done with class, they go put the key back in, take it out, and they go to the next class, whatever else. That way, they're not tempted to use their phones during class time when they should be focusing on their studies. be focusing on their studies.
Do you believe that we should continue to provide more options for extracurricular classes for our student body?
I'm sure, but again, it's just what, what are we talking about? We don't know. I don't know what's, I don't know all what's available right now. I know what my kids want to be involved with and they, you know, they're, you know, it seems to be, a lot of kids do those things, but if there's other ones that could be part of something, let's say, just for reference, like a chess club or something like that, then, you know, you're going to have to have is, uh, a teacher or a parent that would, has some background on it, would, that we want to do that as well and willing to give the time for it. So, um, we, what I'd say, come up with, you know, if the student body came up with some ideas for potential, um, activities, extracurricular or after-school, whichever else, and then we could put it towards, um, to the teachers and the families, hey, is there anybody, would that be interested in leading this type of thing? And would it be something that they'd be interested in doing possibly even after their student is not there or not involved? That way it's, can keep it going or they can help set up the next person to take it over. That way it can continue to be available to the students.
What are your opinions on current security measures for our student safety on campuses?
Most part, I feel they're good. I'm not there every day, uh, but most time that I'm there, I see a deputy or a sheriff, or the sheriff on site, you know, roaming around. I know that I can never get in, which is good, uh, if I try to go there for some reason for, you know, to whichever else. I know I can, I can never get into a door. I, and I gotta wait for, you know, make sure that somebody in the office can let me in. So what I feel is that it's, uh, the, the children seem to be safe. I like the door measures that are in each classroom. So if there's a threat, they can immediately put down the locks, no one can break into the doors, for the most part, I mean, within reason. So I feel there is a, a pretty good security, um, policy. I don't know if there is a, without seeing a, you know, actual written policy or anything else, I've not seen one, I don't know. If there's one, like the, the police has to longer respond or something like that. I don't know what that, um, involves if there is one. But for most part, I feel, I feel that the response has been pretty good for security aspect of it for, for our school and for our students. But I will say, I've never been to Crest Valley during a school day or anything else, so I don't know how theirs are, there is, I cannot, I can't speak on that. I can only say when I try to get into the elementary school or the high school. So I can't say, I cannot speak on Crest Valley, whether they would need greater security or not, I don't know.
What are your views on allocating educational funding in our district between Crescent Valley and Eureka?
What's the first part of that again?
What are your views on allocating funding in our district? So how do you just, just, like, distribute the money?
Without seeing how it's currently spread, I, I cannot say for certain what that would be. I'm sure it should be, it should be definitely fair and now, uh, fairly allocated to ensure that, um, all the students are receiving the same amount of, um, per, you know, of, I want to say educational, it should be, it should be fair across the board. I'm not saying whether it be a, you know, one-third to Eureka Elementary, one-third to Eureka High School and one-third to Crest Valley. I don't know if that, you know, I have to look at the numbers of the students, everything else, whether that's, that would be adequate or not, I don't know. But I would have to see if there, is there something lacking and then talking to those facilities, you know, the staff of those places to see if that is, are they missing something? Is there something that should be more that, or, or if they have a complaint, have they voiced it? And then what, 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 you know, what they feel should be different. But I, I, I've heard some complaints, but I, I, I'm not part of the school boards, I can't say whether there's some validity to that, but if it would come up, I'm definitely looking into it.
What would be your priorities, or what would your priorities be for the staff and students at our school?
To make it the, I want to say the, the best experience for them. I'm not saying it's always the most fun time, I'm saying it's the best, the best learning experience for them, so they're getting the most out of it. So hopefully we'd have the best quality, um, facilities, teachers, staff, you know, vehicles, everything. So when they do it, they know that they're, they're receiving the, the, what they should, what they think, what they deserve here. We're a great school, a great school district, we're a great county. I think, I think we're the best in, in the state, so I think we, they would deserve it, not, you know, to be able to receive that. So I think that would be fair to them. So I would want to make sure that they're, that they feel that same way, that they're, that they're receiving what they should be deserve, you know, I'll say what they deserve, but quality, education, quality facilities, quality, everything. Not above and beyond, but just.
Do you think that cameras should be put into classrooms?
I don't necessarily know about classrooms. I think it better, like, I, I don't sure if they're, all the hallways have them or not. I sure as heck don't think, they should not be in the locker rooms, bathrooms, anything else. But I think as long as there, is there, I don't know the current layout of what we have in, in store right now. I know there are definitely some cameras, um, throughout, especially on doors and everything else, which is good, which we definitely need. But for classrooms themselves, I don't necessarily think so, um, unless it is a, unless we feel there's a growing trend where the students are not safe in their classrooms, then by, any number of reasons, then that would be something to look into. But that's, that is a huge cost, um, to everyone involved. And then how do you moderate it? How do you store it? How do you, you know, take, you know, it, it opens up, it opens up a larger, I won't say can of worms, but a larger, um, set of questions or situations that I don't think we're anywhere near at this point. But I don't think it's, I don't think we're there yet. I don't think it needs to be in classrooms, not yet.
So my final question, uh, I'd like to get, what is your vision for our educational system in our community?
I think it's been pretty good so far. I'm, I think, you know, we can always, things can always change, things can always improve or, you know, things can always go south too. But I think that, um, what I feel I can provide to this community, um, and to our kids and everything else, as a, and the parents, everybody, um, is, um, I have a good work ethic, I have a good, you know, understanding of things. I like to listen to what the complaints are and everything else, so I can, you know, again, we can make sure that everybody's being heard, uh, and then make sure that the best decisions, we can try to hopefully have the best decision made for that. I think the kids are receiving a good educate, or quality education now, but things can always be improved. I don't know, again, everything in the, in the north, make sure that they're getting the same thing that we're getting here. I can't speak to that. That's necessarily what my, I don't know. On that part, I, I think, I think we're all getting the same education, so I don't know why we wouldn't be. So I just want to make sure that the kids are receiving what they need and that the proper education for it and that it's not something that's, um, they should not be exposed to. Cause I would be curious to see, like, with education, where are we getting our education from? Is from, you know, the, the Nevada Board of Education or do we pick it ourselves? Is it appropriate for here that you, you might not see in the, you know, are we getting the same education that the big city has? We probably shouldn't be. We should probably be more focused on what we do here and more geared towards us for the smaller community. So I feel that just as long as that's being maintained and done well and that the students' best interests are at heart and everybody's a whole, I think that's the right direction. And so far, I feel that we've been doing that pretty well.
Anything else you'd like, just to, anything else you'd like to talk about?
No, I'm always open for questions from anybody, if you guys will, uh, to reach out. I'd like to, um, I, I'd like to, I'd say I'm an open book. I feel that I can be an improvement, but I want to hear what's going on. I, I don't know what I don't know. I sure as heck don't know a lot about the school board yet because I'm not part of it. So I don't know what the policies, procedures, everything else, but I sure as heck was, if I got the position, I, I would learn them. And I'd want to hear from all sides, all schools that we have, all the teachers and everything else, to make sure that, that, um, if they want to be heard, they can be. And hopefully they do it properly through the school board meetings and everything else. Cause I don't think it comes out right if it's just a person on the side or everything else getting something and then bring it to the group. I think it should be for, um, there's proper methods for things being done, which they, you know, is available to them. I don't know if everybody knows, like, I like how the school board meetings are broadcast live and then, you know, it's broadcast live from Crescent Valley as well, so that people can attend there, uh, if they wanted to. So I think it's a great way to, to voice, uh, issues or anything else. I just don't see it taking, but maybe everything's fine. Maybe, maybe, maybe that's why there's not a lot, a lot of involvement here or there at these meetings, because maybe everything's fine. We'll see when I get there, if I'm, if I'm elected. I really hope I am elected. I really hope to gain your vote. And if you guys have any doubts or anything else, please ask me so I can hopefully dissuade those from you. And thank you.
We got 10 minutes, so just about 10 minutes for any questions. If anybody would like to ask anything, uh, can yield the floor. We got about 10 minutes for extra questions. If anybody have anything for our candidate, Mr. Douglas Takeover, anything? Any volunteers?
Thanks, Dorham.
So as you're talking, funding has always been a big deal within the, uh, school district and community. How would you strive to make it, uh, funding fair between the different, like sports, music program, different clubs like FFA? How would you strive to make that and like student council and things? How would you make it more fair so you each doesn't get, you know, there's not a surplus going to just one place or someone's not getting enough?
Well, a lot of that would be past history to look at, you know, from, okay, this was your budget that was allotted to this sport, let's say football or basketball or FFA or music. To say, okay, this is what you requested, this is what was spent and what was this, was it spent properly or did you just, did people just spend on anything? Yes, I would try to make sure it was fair across the board. And then I'd like, I would love to hear, I would assume the board, other board members would as well, for at some point, a meeting with the staff, the faculty to, um, about, from those groups to see if, if their needs are being met. Is there something that's not, should it be, should something be changed, reallocated or something just gained, you know, just grown in that, that one thing? I think I, the, a change of, that's what I was saying, like a multi-purpose building would be a great addition to the school because of the fact it would affect a lot of things. It could allow for more growth of different events, allow for different things, um, for, even community things like dance, whichever else. I'd love to see, you know, a band, a true music hall for, for students and that facility could be used for, like I said, assemblies, for meetings, for any number of things, FFA, academic Olympics, that, um, would be beneficial for all, you know, and then, then it promotes, there's proper seating in that kind of place than you could have it where people would want to come more and see it instead of stuffed in like the band hall, you know, band room, prime example. Everybody's trying to fit in there, decide, hopefully watch their kid, you know, you're kind of squished together, it's not really fair and it's not really musically based for that, that's, it's a classroom, it's not a, a music room. Mr. Kudrow does a great job with that and the same with the elementary school. So that's just one program, cause I, I have a very strong passion for music for, for that.